... of the year, the second council meeting in March. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Shane Victorin to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item are the mayor's informational items. If you've lived here long enough, you know we are in for several more weeks of potential winter-like weather. This is the case even though the first day of spring is this Thursday, March 20th. This city provides many opportunities for recreational activity for our citizens and visitors to our city. We have acres of city parks, camping opportunities, baseball, softball, and soccer fields, a first-class public golf course, and a walking path that extends across the breadth of the city. We also have a municipal swimming pool that is open from late spring to the end of the summer season. City workers are busy preparing for the upcoming spring and summer seasons. We have a smart, hard-working, trained, and dedicated employees who are now busy preparing and will be kept busy for months maintaining all these fields and facilities. It takes all the city workers, part-time seasonal employees included, to make this system work. All are involved. I want to take time to thank all the department heads and all the employees that make this work for the benefit of all. The Director of Public Works, the City Clerk Treasurer, the Chief of Police, the City Attorney, the City Court Judge, the Fire Chief, the Emergency Medical Services Director, the Pool Manager, the Museum Director, the Golf Pro Manager, Streets and Sanitation Department, Water and Wastewater Department, Electrical Department, Airport Personnel, Buildings and Grounds, the Mechanic Shop, the Purchasing Department, the Utility Department, the Communication and 911 Personnel, the Cemetery Personnel, and the Administrative Staff that work in the front office. I hope I have not left anyone out. I also thank my fellow council members who are tasked with monitoring all of this and who are responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of all our residents and visitors. Thank you to all who make this city work, and blessings to all for a safe, fun, and enjoyable spring and summer season. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of the March 4th, 25 council meeting as published.
Mr. Mayor, would you make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. I want to enter a discussion period because I've got something to say. Rick, you're new, Rick Warren, on this. We publish minutes. Those minutes are accurate record of what we do in here, okay? They are published, they are reviewed by council, they are approved by council, and they are published in the paper. Given that, I was distressed to read an article on Friday, March 7th, 2025, after our March 4th council meeting, where there was a headline that says, "City Council Okays Another One-Half Million For Baylor Project." That is the direct opposite of what is true. Let me say that again. The headline reads, "City Council Okays Another One-Half Million For Baylor Project." That's just the opposite of what's true and the opposite of what happened in that meeting. Also, in the article itself, it says, "The amendment to the Enberg-Miller construction contract that we passed, the amendment increased the project cost by up to $453,250." Just not the case. That is not what happened. If you'll refer to the minutes, the second large paragraph on page two of the minutes, that tells exactly what happened in this meeting. That project is still $5.5 million, which included the engineering and permitting costs. So those costs that council approved when they passed that amendment, the Fourth Amendment to the Enberg-Miller contract, was already accounted for in that $5.5 million. There was not another half a million dollars for the Baylor project. That was just wrong, and I just wanted to point that out. Now, right now, I have a motion and a second. This is the discussion part, and I would ask council if there's any further discussion on the motion.
I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes from the March 4th, 25 council meeting as published, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that Consent Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All right, I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we refer to as the public forum. There are not any takers for that this evening. That's that black box in front of Councilman Warren, but I like to explain it because we are being broadcast on the radio. This is a place on the agenda for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for council to listen. No action will be taken. All right, we are ready to go into the action items. First action item on the agenda is the audited financial statements for fiscal year '24. We have with us here tonight Paul Still from Leo Riley &amp; Company and Mrs. Lynette Strecker. And I see Mr. Still is ready to give us his report.
Yeah, 15 minutes, is that?
That'll work.
Reasonable on that?
And then we'll see what questions these gentlemen might have.
Yeah, you can interrupt me with questions, too, as I'm going along, so. First, I'm gonna start with the short item there. I think everybody's, except for Councilman Warren's, heard me, yeah, the three-page item. So since we have a new board member or a new council member, I'm gonna just briefly explain what goes into the financial statements and what my procedures are a little bit, if that's okay with everybody. It's always nice to have a refresher, too, for those that have heard me before. The short item there goes through my responsibilities as auditor, goes through the council or the city's responsibility to adopt accounting policies and procedures. Then it continues on, goes through if I've had any material adjustments, any disagreements, any problems with doing my audit, which we had none. And then it goes through if I have a finding that you do not agree with, you're entitled to a second opinion. My word isn't final, so, on that. And even if I do have suggestions, that's all they are. They're suggestions, okay? If I have findings, then it's, you know, the city or the DTA, that's their decision whether they pursue what my suggestions are. Okay, I'm gonna get into the financial statements now. And I hand it out, I've got some markups in them, I hope that helps to follow along. And I'm just gonna turn to the table of contents first. When we do an audit for a municipality, a county, a governmental entity, we really have two parts to them. Circled there in red is the financial statements. My primary responsibility is to report on the presentation of the financial statements, whether they're in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, and whether the numbers are accurate within a reason of materiality. And so, as you can see, we have our auditors' report there on one through three. The government-wide financial statements, that's gonna be everything combined. That's full accrual, so that's gonna be including depreciation, long-term debt, and everything. The government-funded financial statements, which is primarily focusing on revenue streams and any restrictions on those revenue streams. So like, if there would be, well, like if I'm at the county and they have a library fund, the library fund's restricted for the library, okay, on that. It can't be used for other things. If you assess a tax for something or receive a grant, it's restricted for those purposes, okay? And then we have the proprietary funds, and that's gonna be primarily the utilities and the ambulance. And those are the funds that are primarily, like they say, proprietary, or primarily purpose is to be run like a business and be self-sustaining on that. So that's the water fund, the sewer fund. Then we have the notes of the financial statements, and then we have the budget information on '40 to '42. And the last part of the financial statements, there's gonna be the defined benefit pension plan, the Wyoming Retirement System information, which the city has three components that they participate in, the Public Employee Plan, the Law Enforcement Plan, and the Volunteer EMT Plan. There in yellow is the second part of my report, and that's gonna be the compliance items. I have a compliance item for internal auditor's report on internal control or financial reporting and compliance. Now, I don't test everything in compliance at the city. I test the compliance that I feel is material for me expressing an opinion on the items in red. So I'm primarily looking at treasury functions, disbursements, paying functions, payroll functions, budget functions, things like that. So I mean, I don't go through, you know, the whole municipal code and everything like that. I just have to report on compliance that I feel is material for me to present my opinion on the financial statements. And then we have the internal control. Again, that's the same way. I have to report on the internal control, if I have any problems with it, on things that contribute to the financial statements. The item I've circled there in green, usually when we hit the threshold of $750,000 in federal expenditures, we're required to have a federal audit. And so, when we have a federal audit, I go to the federal government's website, and like this year, the ARPA is over $750,000 by itself.
Can you say that, can you repeat that one more time?
The number for the federal?
$750,000. It's actually gonna go up to a million here in the next couple of years. But once we hit that $750,000, I've gotta go to the federal government's website and see what they want. I got a hierarchy, the flow chart that I go through to pick the programs, it's usually higher-risk programs, and it's usually the larger programs. And so I go through that flow chart, I come down, and so let's say, so this year it ended up being ARPA, okay? So then I go to the federal government's website, they have what they call the compliance supplement, and giving me audit procedures or audit procedures, some of those might apply, but if I do not follow those guidelines and, you know, I get examined on it, you know, because we have people come in and examine our work also, then I have a failed audit. I don't follow those procedures that the federal government lays out. Now, it's a little bit different this year because the ARPA actually has an alternative procedure engagement, where if the ARPA puts us over the top of the $750,000, which it does, everything else is under $750,000, I can elect a streamlined approach on that. So I don't have to go through everything for the federal audit, there are just a few procedures, and so that's what we did this year, because ARPA put us over the $750,000, and we did a streamlined approach. Now, when I do an audit, like I explained, I cannot look at everything. So essentially, when we audit, we're auditing procedures. We're auditing procedures over disbursements, we're auditing procedures over sewer water billing, utility billing. And so what that involves is we take a sample and project that sample to the rest of the population to make sure that the procedures are functioning as described and as intended. Also, I'm contacting banks, state of Wyoming, your investment companies, to verify that what you have in the financial statements agrees to what is presented in the city's records. Now, when we get to putting the financial statements together, I don't make this stuff up in here, okay? This stuff comes from records at the county, records at the city, I'm sorry, I had a county commissioners meeting this morning, records at the city that's prepared, and I start with the base of what your budget reports are to you and your treasurer's reports to there. And then we have to, I put it together, and I get information from the state of Wyoming, from Wyoming Retirement System, and from state treasurer, and from, usually I just go to Wild Open, and it helps me out to let you know what's been paid to the city. And then I put this into the form of financial statements that meet the AICPA's requirements, okay? And so I'm just a tool for that. These are your financial statements, they're not mine. The only thing in here is mine, is my auditor's report and my internal control and compliance reports. The one thing that happens is, to get these into a readable form compared to your budget, it's a lot of summarization and condensing down on that. Going from, I mean, I don't know how many line, your budget, probably 1,000 line items, and, you know, I gotta get that in a form that's a readable form, okay, on that. So it's a lot of condensing and combining. Yes?
Just to clear up my confusion, you did perform the federal audit function in this review?
Yes, right, yes. But we were able to use a streamlined approach that only ARPA program allows for those entities that would normally be under $750,000, but the ARPA puts them over the top, okay? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it cuts down the time on that and streamlined, and we might be in this position again next year on that, so. And that's not normally the case, but the ARPA money was so large and handed out that it put a lot of the smaller entities in that position, where their federal money wasn't gonna be subject to audit, but the ARPA money threw them over the top. On pages one through three is our auditor's report. And then, just in the financial statements, I mean, they're, they kinda carried over pretty close. I mean, there's not really a whole lot of changes in anything from last year, except for the sewer project. So like here, just to point it out, here under the business activities, which is the utilities, we had construction in progress through the end of June, $3.3 million. And primarily, that's gonna be what's in the cost to the, at that point, design and construction on that. Same as, again, it'll show up again on the, where the utilities are broken out.
I'm sorry, Paul, just, where are you exactly in the paper?
Oh, I was on page three, okay, or page four.
Page four, okay.
And I just had circled the costs there. This is the balance sheet for the full accrual. And the item that's primarily different from last year is the construction in progress. We track the cost of the project until it's complete, and then we start depreciating And then we have the profit and loss of full accrual, and this is gonna include depreciation on page five. And we start with expenses. What you were able to charge for the services for those, what you had donated for operating grants and contributions, so that's gonna be grants that go to non-capital items, and then we have the grants in column four that go to capital items, and you can see the big item, the $1.8 million. And I know that's gonna get a lot larger by the time we get done. And then we have the net cost to taxpayers, and then we need to supplement that by property taxes, sales tax, and so on. And then we come down to approximately increase in that position about $500,000 last year. And $500,000, and most of that's gonna be sitting in the sewer project, because it goes on the balance, the expenditure goes on the balance sheet, and the revenue goes through the profit and loss. Then I'm gonna skip ahead to page nine. And this is just gonna be the balance sheet again for the business-type activities, and we have on there, I just circled the construction in progress for the sewer fund. And then, like I was just explaining, if you come over here to page 11, we're gonna have the grants here going through the profit and loss through the income statement as a non-operating item. Then I'm gonna skip ahead here, I'm just going through some of the highlights. I'm gonna skip ahead to, I'm sorry, page 39. And this is the footnotes to the financial statements. The footnotes include accounting policies, treasury functions, cash, fixed assets, Wyoming Retirement System, just as contingency where we're at, and I know, I think you're gonna have some other things going on with this, just as contingency where we're at with the sewer, what's been awarded to date, and what we have gotten into it so far. That's kinda what I wanted to cover. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I don't know if you had a chance to look at any things. I think Lynette said it got emailed out in your board packet on Friday. I know it's a lot, I think, I always go through that stuff, and I think, you know, as I go through it time after time and time, you know, maybe it sinks in a little bit.
I just have a couple of questions, Paul.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I know that when you're here, you and your staff are here conducting the audit.
Uh-huh.
And I ask you, when I see you, at those times, you're getting everything you need from our staff.
Oh, yeah, no, they're great. They're wonderful, they're very helpful. Appreciate all their help, very prompt and replying with everything. They're wonderful to work with and never really, never had any issues with the staff.
Okay. And you've been doing this for how many years?
Oh, I don't know, Larry Muskimmens.
Dennis was trying to figure that out.
Larry Muskimmens was the county treasurer, or city treasurer when I started, so I mean, that's, Lynette's been here a long time. I would say, I would say, late 90s.
Yeah, over 30, because Larry was treasurer when I started in 88.
Yeah, no, we were here just the last couple of years before he retired.
Yeah, it was very long after the 90s.
Yeah, so right before, so.
Thank you for satisfying our curiosity.
Yeah, so, all right. I lose track, the years just seem to roll together.
And the important thing to me, as much as anything else, was the, there are no substantial findings or concerns?
No, no, there's not. I just put in there the small office, the small size. I talked about it a little bit last year, I mean, you know, most of the times when things happen, it's at remote locations. Everything through here is pretty well-controlled. You know, I go to, everything here is pretty centralized, too, but if I go to like a county, you got the county fair, you got the county library, you got the, you know, all these different peripheral entities, everything here is pretty centralized. So, but there is some collections at remote locations, things like that, make it a little bit higher risk, but I mean, there's very definite procedures that go through, approval process for the disbursements, approval process for the payroll, and things like that. And I mean, that's kinda, and I think you take active interest if there's a disbursement that you're questioning. I hope that you get a, you know, get a satisfactory answer to, if you question a disbursement, or if something like that, you get a satisfactory answer to your question.
Paul, I had a question on the pension plan.
Yeah.
Particulars, the city's obligation to that.
Yeah, good point, yeah. I've talked, yeah. So Wyoming Retirement System's underwater, I think they're funded about 80, 81%, it varies from year to year on the measurement dates. They have a measurement date of December, and our audit's on June, so we have that difference in measurement dates. But, so, so there's an unfunded liability there. Your contribution rates are set by statute, okay? So there's this unfunded liability that my rulemaking body, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, says nobody's showing it on their books. The federal government doesn't show the unfunded liability for Social Security on their books, but we have our pension plan here that feels that needs to be shown on our books. So what we do is we go to the WRS website, tells me that City of Torrington had a 1% interest in the law enforcement plan. So I gotta take that liability that's for the law enforcement plan, or the liability that's for the public employee plan, and multiply it out, and that's the liability that gets dropped into your books, okay, on that. There's some other things that it's trying to track there to smooth things out, you know, there's things like experience changes. Of course, you know, if the investment returns change, that's a huge factor in what the liability is. Or if they, like on the law enforcement plan here, they changed all the assumptions this year. And so all those assumption changes, retirement age, you know, like wage increases, all those assumptions flow through and change that liability, okay? So they're trying to track those changes separately. Or like if, like if you had a place that only had two employees, hired two more employees, so there are four, their liability would double, okay, on that. So it's trying to soothe those changes out through it, but, you know, the state's not gonna come back and ask you to pay, I don't even know what your number is, probably three or four million dollars. State can't come back and say, "We need three or four million dollars tomorrow." But they are, and I don't know that it, I, they are, when I first started doing these contribution rates were 10, 11%, now they're almost 19%, trying to shore up that shortage. And I think it's been, I don't know if it passed or not, I kinda lose track of stuff, but I thought it was before the legislature again to increase rates. Or was it, maybe it was last year, I don't know. I, was it last year? Yeah, okay.
Law enforcement changed, but not public employee.
Yeah, so I mean, so there's, so I mean, it has an effect on the county, forcing you to pay increased rates, but I mean, that liability is not something that the state's gonna come back tomorrow and say, "WRS says we're short, we need $2 million." I don't know if I'm answering your question on that.
I was more or less interested in the city's portion, but you did.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, yeah. So I mean, that's just, the state publishes what the city's portion is on their website, so you got a different portion for public employee plan, you got a different portion for law enforcement, you got a different portion for volunteer EMT. And each one has a different liability that we multiply that out. Now, the law enforcement all gets allocated to the general fund, the volunteer EMT all gets allocated to the ambulance fund, but the public employee plan's gotta be spread across all parts of the city. So the water fund's getting charged for it, sewer fund's getting charged for it in their proportionate share.
And GASB, are the regulations the federal government gives you?
Yeah, well, GASB is, GASB is a board, is a division of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And in the United States, that's a rulemaking body of reporting, so that stands for the Government Accounting Standards Board. There's also a GAAP is for non, for other business things and like that. And that's, so, yeah, that's my rulemaking. And that's, so yeah, that's my rulemaking body on what we need, how we need to present I probably went over my 15 minutes, I apologize.
All right, we had questions. Gentlemen, do you have any more questions for Mr. Still?
Okay, thank, thank you.
Paul, we thank you, and we wish you safe travels.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. It's always nice to meet with you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, we are on item number one, audited financial statements for fiscal year 24. We've had the report from Paul Still of Leo Riley and Company. I would just ask Mrs. Strecker if she has anything else to add here?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, I would entertain a motion on item one to accept the audited financial statement for FY '24 as set forth in item one.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item one, to accept the audited financial statements for FY '24. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Item one, all those in favor of accepting the audited financial statements for FY '24, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those audited financial statements for FY '24 are accepted. Next item on the agenda is the proclamation, proclaiming March 18th, '25 as National Service Recognition Day, and I will go ahead and, and read that proclamation. Letterhead says City of Torrington, and underneath that, proclamation, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties, cities, tribal governments are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps senior participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps senior participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their directed service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas Serve Wyoming and AmeriCorps have helped more than 5,150 Wyoming AmeriCorps members who have served 3.7 million hours across our state, and have qualified for more than 8.7 million in education awards, whereas Serve Wyoming and AmeriCorps shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on March 12, 2025. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim March 18th, 2025, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and signature as Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, this 18th day of March, 2025. Signed, Herb Dobie, Mayor, attest, Lynette Strecker, Clerk, Treasurer. So, gentlemen, that is the proclamation. We have done this before, I think I've done it the past two years, seems like I have, I think that's right, and I don't know how long the city's done it, probably for years and years. So with that, I would entertain a motion for council to approve my signing this proclamation set forth in item two.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the proclamation and authorize your signature.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Vikram, item number two, to approve the proclamation as set forth, and approve my signature on signing it. That was a little awkward, but I think I restated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. All right, any further discussion, gentlemen?
I, I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. What, what is AmeriCorps doing locally here? I can remember as a, as a student in elementary school, they had volunteers come to school, and, and they helped the teaching staff with reading, or helping kids with their homework and, and things like that, but I've since been removed from public education for quite some time, so.
And, and Councilman Vikram, I don't know, I was asking around today, and I'm not aware. Now, just because they aren't currently doing it, doesn't mean they might not do it in the future, and, and part of it's AmeriCorps and Serve Wyoming. So, anybody out there listening, I would encourage you, if this is something that you're interested in, to look to AmeriCorps or to Serve Wyoming if you wanna serve in your community, so. I don't know the answer.
That's fine.
All right, I think I have a motion and a second, don't I?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, item number two, all those in favor of the proclamation and approving my signature on it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that proclamation is approved by council, and I will indeed sign it. All right, next item on the agenda is item number three, 2025 Power Cost Adjustment, PCA, electrical rates effective April 1, 2025, and I would call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So every year around this time, we file with the Public Service Commission a power cost adjustment, and what this is, is, so every year, our wholesale power supplier meets in Lincoln, and they, the board, which we are a member of, goes through and go through their financials and decide whether or not that the wholesale power will increase. So this year, MEAN, who is our wholesale power provider, is increasing the rates across the board about 9.5 percent. So the power cost adjustment allows us to pass on those direct costs, or the cost of the power that we purchase and provide to our customers, so it allows us to pass on those increases. So there's quite a process to go through this every year. We do hire an attorney and a consultant to help with the forecasting and for this application to the PSC, and so we look at also our two other power suppliers' contracts, which are WAPA-LAP and WAPA-Slica. We will be seeing an increase in WAPA-LAP as well, so all of that is taken into account, and you can see the spreadsheets that has all the information that we take, past and present information, and then forecast future, and the application, this is, for this, this year, looks like we're gonna see an increase of about 5 percent for our customers, effective April 1st. I'm actually quite pleased, I was hoping it wasn't gonna be 9.5 percent, so it, it turns out with all of the, the forecasting and everything, that it's gonna be about a little over 5 percent for our customers. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, this will be filed, it's filed, and we hope to have a hearing around April 1st, but I haven't heard on that final date yet.
Now, Mrs. Strecker, MEAN, for those who don't know, stands for Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska, right?
It does.
And that's our primary, I guess?
Yes.
Supplier of electricity?
About 80 percent of our power comes through MEAN. Our allocation from WAPA keeps going, going down, I think it's about 20 percent right now, so.
And this is a little off topic, WAPA, Western Area Power Administration, that's federal, right?
It's federal, it's basically hydro power contracts, you know, dam, but power produced from dams in the region, so.
That's mostly hydro power.
Yes.
MEAN is a combination of everything, I think.
Yep, MEAN purchases from several different, and they also generate their own power, they have their own power plants.
And it's interesting, the, our cost will increase wholesale cost by 9.5 percent, right?
Yes.
But we are only seeking to pass on to the customer 5 percent.
Correct.
So what happens to that 4 percent? Nine minus five.
So MEAN isn't 100 percent of our power, first of all.
Okay.
And so even though that's increasing, the whole package put together with, with all of our wholesale power providers and the forecasting of our usage as well, the consultant has, has come up with 5 percent, so.
So right there, I guess, would be a benefit for, for having three suppliers, averages out better for the customer, right?
WAPA is, is the most economical contracts that we have, so they kinda average altogether to come up with our overall increase. So if you look at the tariff, which is towards the back of the application, and they're kinda highlighted in red, you can see how that our rates are gonna change, so residential. If you look at the winner rate, so currently we are at 7.9 cents. If you look at the crossed out red, at 331.24, we're currently at 7.9 cents per kilowatt hour. That's gonna increase to 8.4 cents per kilowatt hour. In the summer, our current rate is 9.8 cents per kilowatt hour. It's gonna change to 10.2 cents per kilowatt hour. So you can kinda see what the change in the rate's gonna be. But if you average out everything, it's probably gonna be about a 5 percent raise for our residents.
And this process, we're, this is heavily regulated by the Public Service Commission, so we have to apply before we can do anything change-wise, correct, and get approved?
Right, so we are, I think, one of the only municipalities who is required to go to the Public Service Commission for rate increases, because we have over 700 customers outside city limits. So the Public Service Commission represents those outside-city customers.
Okay.
So you guys represent the inside-city customers, but we have always applied the rates to both inside and outside equally. So we are required to go to the PSC, and it is heavily regulated, and, you know, their policies are, are pretty, pretty tight compared to what other municipalities do. So I think it's, it's a fair process, I mean, if you think about it, those 700 customers, they, they don't elect you, they have no say in the rate, so they get, they are represented by the Public Service Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might add, in, in reading through this, and this is about the second or third time, I think, well, this comes through us annually, and I think last year we had maybe a slight decrease.
We did.
But what's, what's important, I think, for the, the ratepayer to understand, is that the city's, the city's profit position in this hasn't changed, the city isn't earning any more money than it normally would, it's simply passing that cost on to the consumer. And, you know, while, while we don't like that, that is the, that is the reality that we live in, that costs surpass on to the ratepayer in the end. But I'm sure folks at home have seen in the news that the poor, poor citizens in Casper who are provided power through Rocky Mountain Power are looking at yet another drastic rate increase in their, in their power costs, and almost 15 percent over the previous year's power cost. And so that's three times as much as, as what the citizens of Torrington and the businesses of Torrington might be seeing. Now, they have come to an agreement to bring that down to almost two times what the city of Torrington would be paying, but nevertheless, people outside of Torrington are going to be paying substantially more, when I say outside of Torrington, I mean Casper and areas, other, other areas serves, served by Rocky Mountain Power, so I, given, given the single-digit increase that we're seeing, I, I feel rather pleased, although obviously, nobody likes to have to pay more, but again, that is the reality of, of the life that we live, and so, once again, to summarize my comments, Mr. Mayor, the, the city's position, the city isn't earning any more money, right? The city isn't profiting, and we're not supposed to, but the city's not earning any more money than it normally would, we're just simply passing the, the cost of our wholesale rate on to the customer.
Well said, and that's my understanding exactly what we're doing, or asking the PSC to approve.
And, Mr. Mayor, we just had the audit, and we know that the Electrical Fund is a proprietary fund that must function and be self-supporting.
And it is interesting, and we, the, the city hires a very experienced, well-versed attorney in this specialized area, O'Kelly, is her first name?
Pearson.
Pearson. And then also at what I would call an expert witness, that prepares the affidavits and the arguments and so on, and can testify in front of the PSC. So we're well-represented by Ms. Pearson, and I forget the name of the witness.
Rebecca Payne.
Rebecca Payne, at these PSC hearings, too. All right, gentlemen, any further questions for Mrs. Strecker?
So I just need your approval to move forward with the application, and once it's approved, be effective on April 1st.
Okay, if there are no further questions for Mrs. Strecker, I would, item number three, ask for council's approval to move forward on the 2025 Power Cost Adjustment.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to move ahead with the request to the PSC for the power. for the power cost adjustment, and if approved, to make it effective.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion, item number three, approve moving forward with the 2025 Power Cost Adjustment, and if it is approved, to make it effective. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number three, all those in favor of approving, moving forward on the 2025 Power Cost Adjustment and making it effective if it is approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that is approved, item number three. Thank you, Mrs. Strecker. All right, next item on the agenda is item number four, approval of the bills from March 5 of '25 to March 18 of '25. And I believe there are two sets. There's one attached to your agenda and an additional set we got this evening. Well, I'd call on Mrs. Strecker. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd be glad to answer any questions on those sets of bills that are before you.
On the first set, on page two, the Chicago lumber, about halfway down through, it shows Oak Door, miscellaneous things for nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Where did that go?
Second or first?
Second page of the first set.
I believe that is for Facility Maintenance Shop. I don't know, it's ten forty-eight, eight eighty-five.
Well, that's the doors of the order, Mike.
A door? Outside doors? Outside doors? Interior door?
But that's three of them.
Okay.
They must be solid core.
And then on page three, for Dooley Oil, how many gallons does it relate to, for eight hundred and five? Was it eight hundred and fifty-eight bucks?
It says one drum. That's probably fifty-five gallons, I'm guessing?
It is.
And that one went to Gulf, right?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a comment, not a question. I know what the bill is for. It's a original set, page seven. It's for M L T trucking, and it's for the purchase of water softener salt. And I, I don't know if the rest of the council got a chance to see the improvement at the water treatment plant. But the city now creates its own chlorine through techno, new technology. I don't know if it's really new, but it's been, it's, it's come a long ways for, for cities to use. And the, the rising cost of chlorine has led us to this. And it's pretty remarkable that, you know, you just simply take salt. They use it a lot in pools, I've read. Take salt and through electrolysis, I believe, that you make your own chlorine. And it's going to drastically reduce the cost for the city on purchasing chlorine, since we can make it ourselves. And really, it, it doesn't take a lot of salt to create the amount of chlorine we need for the system. But it's a, it's a pretty neat, neat addition, improvement, if you will, to the city's water system.
Not only is it less expensive, but it's safer. That's my understanding from talking to Tom Troxel. It's a much more safe way to do things.
And it's a compact unit, it's not that big.
I think we, Company out of Laramie, I think, was where we got that.
That's what I believe, yeah.
Yeah, that's modern technology, good stuff.
And I might add one other thing. So you've got cost savings, safety, and you've got a reliability component, component there, that we're not worrying about supply issues, if you will, supply chain issues. We can make it in-house, so long as we have salt.
Long as we got salt.
I might add, on that same vein, kudos to the Water Department and the, the hard-working employees there that have led that improvement to the city and, and brought it to us for the betterment of our, of our water system.
Yep. I think that was Tom Troxel's baby. He wanted that system.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no more further questions on the bill, I would make the motion to pay the Mr. Stenard.
All right, we are on item four, the bills. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the bills as presented. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All right, second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion on the bills? Hearing none. Item four, all those in favor of approval of the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills are approved. All right, next item on the agenda is item five, public comment. And I have Fire Chief Luis Correa back there. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As far as calls go, we've, we've had a little bit of a break from, from that. We've had three calls since the last time we met. Nothing too serious, which is good for us because it's allowed us to do needed maintenance on our fleet and make sure that we're ready for the upcoming fire season. That's projected to be pretty bad with the little moisture that we've had. That's pretty much all we have.
The three calls, what kind of calls were they?
One was a carbon monoxide call. Turned out it was a, a monitor that was at its, at the end of its life. One was a controlled burn that got out of control. And I don't remember what the last one was.
Been windy, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been really windy, yeah. That, the day the out-of-control burn, or the controlled burn that got out of control, it was very, very windy. And thankfully, the homeowner had a, a front-end loader at his disposal, and he's able to help us out. We were able to get it knocked out before it did any, any damage to the neighbors.
Just, so it was like a grass fire?
Yeah, it, it had gotten to some hay bales, and he had been burning along the, the canal ditch. And he thought he had gotten it out the day before. With the, with the windstorm we had on Sunday, it kicked it up, backed up and started it up again.
Right.
And you see what's happening in Texas with the windstorm and fires and the...
Yeah, currently, Goshen County has quite a few, quite a few people out of, out of state. I think Yoder has a few trucks in South Dakota. I know they were trying to get some trucks headed to Kansas. And I believe they, Yoder also has a dozer or two in Texas.
Are those for grass fires, or the tornadoes, or both?
Uh, grass fires, yeah. I, I believe that the Kansas one was sent out as just kind of pre-staging for a wind event that they were, they were expecting. But I believe Laramie County has a few trucks out in Texas as well. So yeah, it's, our fire season's definitely on us. It's, we've been pretty fortunate here in, in our district, and, and we haven't had too many, but.
It's good and amazing in modern times how departments are able to work together to help each other out. That's pretty amazing.
It is, yeah. Goshen County, we're, you know, unfortunately, we haven't always played well together with the other departments. You know, we got a good group of guys that have gotten together and realized that the need to rely on each other is, is a lot greater. And to pull our resources, we've actually gone through and revamped the way we do our radio traffic. And we're in the process of getting everyone the same channel so that if and when we do have to go and help each other out, we know what, with a hundred percent certainty, that we have the same channels and we're able to talk to each other.
And if there's an upside to the bad fire season last year, it was an opportunity to learn things and, and learn how to do things better each time you have to respond, right?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's a pretty tight-knit community that we have, the fire service. And I know on every single federal dispatch I've been on, I've learned stuff from other firefighters, you know, and have been able to bring it back to our department and get better training, get better prepared for all that. So yeah, it's, it's, if, if there is one thing that is good about it is that, yeah, you get to learn from other people you might not otherwise have been able to.
Right. Okay. Any further questions for the chief? Hearing none. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. All right, we are in public comment section, and I don't see any, Mr. Estes.
Got one thing, just to update the council on. As you know, the Goshen, or the Banner Healthcare Foundation has donated money for pickleball courts. So Mark Weiss took that project on, and he's working with Morehouse Inc. out of Torrington Landscaping. They've got all the fence redone over there between the pool and our parks building. The contractor should be back after the weather clears. They were in town last week working for us. Their next project is our pickleball courts. So I would assume within the next month, we're going to see some pickleball courts.
That's a very popular sport, right?
Evidently.
And, and along with that, Dennis, we've expanded more of the deck of the pool area, correct?
Correct, Councilman. We, along with that project, we knocked the, the north fence down on the east end of the pool, and we're going to put the bleachers that used to be sitting on the sidewalk, we're going to put those inside the pool deck area. Jennifer thought that would work better and a little better control over stuff that's going on outside that fence. So you're getting a viewing area and two pickleball courts.
So to sit in the bleachers, you're going to have to come through the building and add into the pool area instead of just being outside, okay?
They're having a lot of issues right outside that fence, and so she's trying to control that a little better.
How's the refurbishing of the pool coming?
You know, it was slow. We were waiting on tile, gutter tiles. We had to get forty new gutter tiles that were broken. And those gutter tiles are about a foot, two foot long and about eighteen inches wide. They're custom-made. I got them made at Panhandle Concrete in Scotts Bluff. Luckily, they can do that for us. The problem with our gutter is when you glue those tiles down, there's no way to clean that gutter out. So when we pulled all them gutter tiles off, that gutter is probably a foot deep, and eight inches of it was full of mud because we've never cleaned it in the fifty years of the pool existence. So part of this project, I bought some new suction intakes where we can stick hoses down them now in more places and get the water pushed around because it only can come out to one place. It goes all the way to the, the very deep end of the pool where that suction is. And that's, that's a long ways to push that sand around there. So hopefully, that'll help. That's one more maintenance issue. But they're supposed to be back Monday, start on the lane tiles and putting the rest of those gutter tiles back on. And then I would assume they're going to start plastering.
So, so we're on track as of now?
I would say so right now. You know, they worked really diligently in the winter over through the hard weather that we had. They've been over there grinding and working, and they got all the baby pool done. They just got to concrete it all back and just clean that up, put the new tiles on it, too. And I, I think we're on track right now. They've been a very good company that's worked with us very well.
I'm pleased to hear that about them, yeah. All right, Councilman, do you have any comments? All right, I would, item six, entertain a motion to leave regular session and go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to recess into executive session for a discussion of potential litigation.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to leave regular session and recess into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving from regular session into executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we will now be in executive session. Thank you, folks.